...only just generally trying to keep public comment. Is everyone at the table, people who are going to speak? And is there anyone in the audience I need to introduce or no? I guess we'll start with Cello on the far side.
Ben Drosa at VCB.
John Miller.
Steve Casper.
Deanna Hinton.
Dick Anderson.
Con Williams.
Riley O'Keefe.
Sisawaki.
Leslie York.
Sheenie White.
Jen Inomendi.
Thank you very much. Again, just as a heads up, I remember these speakers pick things up that if we cross-talk, it kind of negates what you've said for the public records. We're trying to speak one at a time. We wave requesting chair's attention at these meetings unless it gets out of hand, of course, and start throwing chairs and such. Other than that, we're going to start with the discussion items, Lincoln City Branding Project Status Report. So Ed, Ramon?
I'm going to lead off on this one there. Okay, I'm going to lead off talking about what this project is. It's come to been known in some circles as the Lincoln City Logo Project. It's not a logo project. This is a city branding project. This is an attempt to figure out what makes us unique, what sets us apart from all the other coastal towns here in Oregon, what motivates people to visit, what makes people want to live here, what make what people feel proud about. And the other thing it's not, it's not a VCB project. This comes out of the city manager's office. Ron's asked my department to help run it, but it's not ours. And the impact that it'll have goes far beyond the VCB. This is a project that will determine what our official logo is for the entire city, not just for tourism. This will establish what our official color palette is, what our official typeface is. The end product will get a logo, probably a series of logos, but we're also hopefully going to get a look and feel so where when you see anything that has to do with the city, there's a common look, a common feel, a common typeface, a common color palette. So as you drive into Lincoln City, that's established, and there are reminders of that the entire seven and a half miles of the town, to where as you're leaving Cutler City, you're thinking, I'm still there. This is a very difficult project, and one of the things that makes it unwieldy is there are so many people who have to be comfortable and have to agree. A citizen of Lincoln City needs to look at it and go, that's my town, and it makes me feel proud. Business in Lincoln City needs to look at it and go, it's helping me as a business. It's giving this town an identity, and then my sales are going up because of it. Visitors have to look at it and go, what a cool place, I want to go visit there. It has to do a lot of things, and it has to keep a lot of people happy. So as we go through this today, you guys are the first focus group, and we're not asking for any real decisions to be made. You're going to see some things that are logo-esque. They're not the final logo, they're not the recommended logo, they're only designed to get input and your reaction. This is the first stakeholder group we're touching base with. Ron is going to take this on the road, kind of like he did back when he was getting all the input on the PRD issue. And we're going to hear from every significant group in town as to what this solicits, what they think. We're going to gather all this input, feed it back to the agency, and that's when we'll see a recommendation. Is that fair?
That is absolutely fair and correct. Yep.
Okay. So that's a summary of what we're now doing. What I'd like to do is to hand it over to Ron. Do you have any comments? Then off to our forensic VPN to show the work this has been done so far.
This process actually began 11 years ago. If you recall, we had a report done by Robert Brooks. We called it Robert's Report. Roger. Thank you.
That's good. Robert's is younger.
Thank you. And anyways, we called it Robert's Report, and it was a visitor destination report. And it came back with over 50 different recommendations and suggestions. When I came on, Ed's predecessor was a gentleman named Bruce Bustamante, and the first thing I asked him to do was to look at this report and say, is it still valid? And he did. He went through it, gave us a report on it. We shared it with the council at that time. And it's interesting to note that the very first section that this deals with is branding. And I wanted to read to you just a short part of it. Branding is critical, especially for tourism-driven economies. Branding extends far beyond slogans and logos. Branding is your image, your value, your promise. Branding is what sets you apart from everyone else. Many communities need to develop a branding image, and they do that through product development first, then public relations, followed by advertising and sales effort. First, though, the community needs to look a close look at itself and decide what its branding will be. What does it already have that's different, differentiates itself from other similar communities? What's its lure? Then build on that. Well, a year or better ago, we did have some concepts that we wanted to get a feel for, at least our tourists who could come here, what they think of when they came into Lincoln City. And it was a very interesting process that we went through. Fascinating on a couple of things that were set. A lot of, we'll see a lot of city logos that will identify it as a place, such as a rock, a mountain, a stream, a tree, something like that. And one of the most interesting comments that I heard was that in one of the examples we had, we featured some of the rock formations. And the comment we heard back was, well, everybody has a rock. And one of the things we got from that whole process is that people want to see something that matches what they feel about the place more than a sense of place or a physical location. But I found that to be a very, very interesting part of it. In between all of this time, we had a sign that fell over, and that proved to be fortunate because we used that as an opportunity to say, we're going to launch forward now and look at not only the branding, but the logos before we built the sign. We rebuilt the sign, we're going to take a look at this. The other thing that we did is that we took a look at what we already had. We had over 13 logos, I think 13 logos. And this is one of the VCB, this one, the library has one, the community center has one, we have three in the office. So there were multiple images that came out of this. And that's really when I went to Ed and said, you and your staff, I need some help. I need to move this forward. And they laid out a plan, how we can begin moving that forward.
He's making me pay for it.
I am making you pay for it. Which included hiring a team that could help us with that. We have given to them all of this information that we have garnered over the last couple of years. And part of, as Ed mentioned, what we really wanted to do was a lot of outreach to people. But we wanted to make sure you were our first focus group, and you will also be our last focus group, to let you know what we've learned, and then ultimately to make a decision on how we go forward. So that's, you know, a brief history of where we are in this, and Scott, did you have anything you wanted input into this?
No, I think we've covered it well. We had that little focus group recap in the middle of the presentation to go over.
We'll chat. We'll turn the time over to you guys.
Awesome. Is this my call?
Any questions for you before we give it over to them?
Are you aligned with the company?
Yeah, we're with Borders Print and Under VPN. Yeah. So yeah, thank you so much for the wonderful introduction. We have had a lot of fun working on this and getting to know this place and kind of digging into what you guys have given us. And you always just had a lot of fun working on what the look and feel could be like and how you guys can express yourself as a unified brand. So with that, so what we're going to do is we're going to take you through a few examples of destination brands. We're also going to go through a quick SWOT analysis, competitive analysis. I'm going to pass it over to Scott, who should go through just a recap of focus groups and research that you guys have done historically. And then we're going to, we're going to take you through a couple of positioning areas that we played in and one that we ultimately landed on, which was turned into a single sentence, which informed our creative team and really let them launch into, into the creative expression. So a lot of words, but we'll see as we go through kind of the steps and how we got here. And what we'll do is just stop me if you have any questions along the way, but we'll just jump in. With destination brands. Do you want to be? Yeah. I'm actually going to stand up because it'd be easier for you to see me. And Leslie is our strategist, by the way.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you, everyone. I've been thinking so much about Lincoln City for months and months and months, and it's wonderful to be here with the people who are really expert about Lincoln City. Let's talk a second about, about what is a destination brand? So I found this terrible, painfully comprehensive definition that, you know, if you had to memorize this as a student, you'd be weeping, but it's from the European Place Marketing Institute, and it says, "A place brand is a combination of meanings, values, functional and emotional benefits, and symbols that distinguish the place's offering from competitors' offerings, and is created through relations with place target groups and social interactions." So that's all the touch points of a brand and people's perceptions of it. That's what a place brand is. So this is an awful definition, but it's very thorough. And I want to give you some examples of place brands. You probably know some. We should, you know, Virginia's for Lovers, and I love New York, and those are logos and slogans, but I'm going to take you through a couple of different places. Destinations use different elements as sort of their brand platforms, and those things could be functional benefits, like variety and proximity. We've got it all. We've got it right here. Emotional benefits, like inspiration, adventure, relaxation, freedom, renewal. There are places that want to stand for that sort of thing. Some places have a real sense of culture and a sense of place. We know Leavenworth nearby has Bavaria as their sense of place. The Old West comes through in like Wyoming and areas such as that. Modern metropolis, I spend a lot of time looking at Toronto, Canada, which they're positioned all around being open-minded, and the views are different here, it's their tagline. And the rugged outdoors as well, that's a really popular source of positioning. Mindset and values, like I was just talking about Toronto, theirs is all about inclusivity and open-mindedness. So places can also represent themselves by branding on their mindset. So it's not just what your rock looks like, it's how you look, how you feel, what your emotional and functional benefits can be, all part of positioning. This is a brand that we've been working on since 2012. It's called Oregon's Mountain Territory. If you've ever been to Timberline Lodge, you've been in the territory. And we came up with a brand idea for them that, just the shorthand for that is 3D Play, Three-Dimensional Play. What that means is you could go to this part of Plaquemines County, and you can have a multi-sport day, you could kayak all morning, hike in the afternoon, and you can have a great farm-to-plate meal in the evening. So it's this notion that there's a lot to do. The positioning statement is, "In Oregon's Mountain Territory, the sun is near the unlimited, and every activity is within reach." So it's that kind of functional benefit, a lot of variety right here. And our tagline that we developed for that is "Explorer's Welcome," which we think was a nice fit. And we developed a campaign, an advertising campaign called "100 Ways to Play" that was made up of all these little tiles that you could investigate, each one representing a different activity, something to do, something fun about the territory. So that's one example. Another is Leavenworth, Washington. This is not our advertising account, but we all know they're not far away, and they have a very, very focused brand idea, which is everything Bavarian. They rebuilt themselves as an authentic Bavarian village, which they had not been before. The positioning that I just kind of took off their website is, "Leavenworth is a charming, picturesque European village at the feet of Washington State's snowy Cascade Mountains." Their tagline is "The Outs of Washington," again, very focused, signage reflects this, Leavenworth. And you can see on their website, they really use photography and this theme to really hit home. This is the experience you're going to have there. So you know what you're going to get when you go to Leavenworth. Sisters of Oregon, slightly less focused and clearer idea, but we all know what we're going to get with Sisters. It's that cute little western town, feels really authentic. Their brand idea is something they call "The Sisters Country." And the positioning statement, again, I just pulled this off their website, "The Sisters Country is an expanse of majestic and inspiring natural beauty, reaching from the quaint western town of Sisters to the panoramic Pacific Crest Trail." And their tagline is "Pioneering Spirit." So you see, they're trying to create yet a different sense of place and a different positioning. This is from their website. Up here, the logo says "Pioneering Spirit," "The Sisters Country," and there you have the three sisters in the background. So again, they're trying to package and present themselves with this type of personality. I chose one from the East Coast, the Outer Banks of North Carolina, just to mix it up a little bit. And this brand idea is "Endless Possibilities." Their positioning statement is, "You'll be rewarded for stepping outside the ordinary, trying something new, and experiencing endless possibilities." And their tagline is "Stir Your Soul." This is their website, and it's all about having experiences that really kind of inspire and awaken you and invigorate you and so forth. So you could look at any of these and poke holes in them. You could look at any of these and say, how is that different from, you know, Wilmington, Delaware, or any other city? You can poke holes in these things. But nevertheless, a well-built brand position for a destination really tells a story of that place in a way that's appealing and yet true at the same time.
Just because Jen and I thought we'd mix it up a little bit, I thought she would tell you a little bit about some kind of quick and dirty survey and research that we did. Yes, so we reached out to our friends and people we know in the industry and kind of put a little survey out there saying, what do you think about Lincoln City? And we asked a few questions, and these were some answers we've received back that we, that we took and kind of took to heart.
Yeah, there's two quotes that we thought kind of proved interesting points. They were illustrative.
Yeah. So one of them is, "At Lincoln City, I'd expect a relaxing weekend trip. I don't see Lincoln City as a super-active, adventure-driven destination, no ATVs, no surfing, horseback featuring, et cetera. So if I want to get away from the city and the crowds of the other popular northern beach towns, i.e. Cannon Beach, then maybe Lincoln City would be a good fit." Paula said, "It's an average coast town, nothing unique that interests me or my family." So she's just not going to consider it. It's not on her consideration set. And then Lisa, "I like, I like the bay at Lincoln City. You can wade out deep, you can paddle, board, or kayak. I really like the shell fishing and water sports you can do at the bay. We also built driftwood buildings, which is great. I think sitting in a house right on the bay looking at the sunset and playing sports is the best part of Lincoln City."
Yeah, so that third quote, I thought was interesting because she is acknowledging that this is not Disney World. This is a place where you're going to carry your own experience, it's going to be personal, it's going to be meaningful, and it's not going to be all packaged up for you. So I thought that was really interesting. So those quotes kind of helped us start to weigh fine a little bit and understand like, what is this place and how is it perceived? We also got this great immersion download of information from Ed and Scott. They told us all about Lincoln City. And between that and doing some online research, we created a SWOT analysis, you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So, sorry. I'll take you through it real quick. So I hope you all know, you've got a ton of strengths here, there's lots to work with. Seven miles of beautiful Lincoln City beaches, Delta's Lake, the shortest river in the world, the Dee River, and Celeste's Bay for more water recreation, as if the ocean wasn't enough. So many stunning hikes, Cascade Head, Drift Creek Falls, and the Knoll, I just did God's Thumb, and it was amazing. Your room capacity, 4,300 rooms, including vacation rentals, which is a third more than Newport, that is really compelling. You also have many interesting attractions, like the Jennifer Sears Last Art Studio, the Culinary Center, the Skate Park, Lincoln City Outlet Mall, Chinookwinds Casino Resort, et cetera. And then you've got some really fun events, including the float hunt, which I see you've been doing even more with, with the red, white, and blue floats that were just out, and then the pumpkins, I got a pumpkin. Pigeon Festivals, Tour de la Four, Pixie Fest, the Chowder and Brew Fest, Celeste's Bay Music Fest, et cetera. So there's a lot happening in Lincoln City. And then you have proximity to other beach towns like Newport and Deep Cove, who are kind of complimentary as well. So all of these are strengths. Some weaknesses, we know Lincoln City can only be visited and explored by car. Outside of Chinookwinds Casino Resort and Estelle's Shant, we lack the capacity for group travel. Medium-sized groups are sort of like the best that you could currently do. There's a lack of a clear, compelling identity, and just comparatively, you know, we're not, Lincoln City's not a cute little beach town like Vancanita. It's not upscale like Cannon Beach. It's not charming and historic like Astoria. It's not all about family fun like Seaside. It's got somewhat inconsistent marketing materials. You were just talking around about all the different logos. So that's a small weakness. And a strong competitive set with similar or maybe even better perceived offerings. That's something we considered to be a weakness. Opportunities really tap into Lincoln City's potential. And we mean by that, we mean in the short term, appeal to Portland and Valley audiences with the product we currently have, because there is a lot to offer here. Longer term, think about building toward a destination identity, maybe more like Sisters, Astoria, Ashland, where there's a real clear sense of what you're going to get when you go there. A pretty clean slate regarding group travel. And you can use branding also to build civic pride. That's something any good branding campaign should do as well. Some threats, maybe just a sense of lower expectations, maybe you could raise those up. And when you have a branding void, meaning if you lack a clear identity, other people will define your brand for you. So if they don't know what to expect, they'll just say, huh, I don't know, it's not, it's not what I'm looking for, and you might not be defined positively. So in summary, Lincoln City's strengths and opportunities outweigh weaknesses and threats. And we really think the great opportunity here is to get Portlanders and Valley residents to think about what Lincoln City does have rather than what it doesn't have. We just want to show you, we did a quick competitive analysis, and we looked at advertising for other big Oregon coastal destinations. The bar is not high. We're a little bit critical because we're advertising people, so you know, we like what we like, but I would say that the marketing for destinations on the Oregon coast could be stronger. What I see mostly happening that I think is not, not great, is we see in the ads that you're about to share, or I'm about to share, we see positioning strategy in search of creative, and we see creative in search of positioning strategy. So the two things are not interconnected in a, in a strong way that makes sense to people. So.
Just take a break. Is anybody having questions? I'm not sure if you do, just feel, we're moving forward and so.
Well, I have a couple, but one specifically is, it's really, I like the idea of one-picture mindset or whatever a connection is, but it isn't. And so that's going to be a hurdle. And then the other thing is that I really like the part of the identity, identification or whatever, to be supported by and by the residents here, the community here. And I see this stronger for the Valley. And I want us to come together, because we are distinct areas.
Yeah, it seems, you know, you say this is a destination brand examples, and it's that specifically towards places to visit and, you know, other, let's say, not destination brand examples. So you're trying to market a town for the people that are there to see that the difference between this being, we're selling Lincoln City, and this being, this represents Lincoln City. So I think that ties into that, to that, you know, they want a feeling.
Right. You all live here. I mean, this has to work for you, and this isn't just Leavenworth where you can go and, you know, raise a beer and experience our Toberfest. This is a city with people who live and work and, you know, it's not exactly the same example, but I just wanted to sort of talk about how some brands talk about themselves. So just some thoughts I need to add. This is an advert, Tilma Coast, means like a pig in Ford race or something. So I would love to go to this. I think this seems really fun and unique, but their tagline is "The Natural Choice," and their brand is all about being naturally beautiful, a gorgeous place, and this just feels like it doesn't fit with that. So again, it's creative and strategy are like wandering around, not holding him. This is from, this is a digital ad from Pacific City's website, I think. The message is, "Slip away to uncomplicated Pacific City. Explore the rugged Oregon coast. Retire to your luxurious accommodations." So rugged and luxurious, and then revel in award-winning beer. So it's like you've got the rugged beer hot tub kind of thing. It's just, it's going in too many directions at once, they're not all aligned. And then this is the Adventure Coast, which is Coos Bay and North Bend, I think. So find the you that fits. To me, that just looks like a bad RAI ad. It's not really telling me what this place is like. Some observations about competitive ads. You know, if you've sort of ever taken a marketing class, you know about the universal selling proposition, the USP, and it's very hard to have a USP. A lot of these brands don't even try. They're leveraging similar imagery, and they promise variations on the same experience. Sometimes when we look at ads like in healthcare, a lot of ads look exactly the same. So in our agency, we've taken to calling it the Sea of Sameness. We'll put up a whole wall of these ads and go, there it is, there's the Sea of Sameness. Well, in this case, we see the iconic sea stacks of sameness, and also this promise that we have it all. We have, you know, the beer and the rugged coast and luxurious accommodations. We have it all. So in an effort to set themselves apart while having something for everyone, a lot of these places begin to blend. So, you know, Tilma starts to look like Rockaway Beach, starts to look like Pacific City, starts to look like Cannon Beach, starts to look like, it's Banda.
Banda.
And they're all beautiful places. I mean, this is not a criticism of the intention. The intention was to show how beautiful it is and draw people here. That's absolutely true. But if I'm looking to compare one to the other, I find it hard to know what my choice would be. Strong branding can make a big difference, and we see that now in Seaside's new campaign. It's a good example of positioning strategy and creative working hand in hand. So this is the family fun place at the coast, and they have really brought that to life with the sort of like 1960s child, children's book illustration kind of style. It's really engaging and, oh, sorry, Ed. And you can also see it in their print advertising. This is an ad for how to feed the seals in Seaside, and we have dad and kids. Dad is genuinely smiling, kids are having a blast, and that's what I want when I go to Seaside. I want to connect with my child. I want to have a good time. I want it to be family fun. Whereas this Newport ad, I mean, Newport has the aquarium and lots of things for families to do, but this ad isn't hitting me emotionally. The first line is, how many times have you heard, "Come play with us." Like, oh, those annoying children, they want to play again. Let's send them to the beach, and they'll turn cartwheels and leave us alone. It's just an odd ad for basically the same offering, family fun. So doing it better does matter. And getting to seven miles of smiles, some observations about that idea for Lincoln City. It's kind of trying to do two things at once. It's marrying an ownable, rational benefit, seven miles of gorgeous beach, with a not ownable emotional benefit. You know, any beautiful beach can make you smile. So it's kind of trying to do two things at once. The message in the print ads that, that we saw is very consistent, but the photography is a little bit inconsistent because you've got a mix of like the engaged people, some are sort of like empty landscapes, and you've got objects like the floats. So I really don't want to criticize your work because I actually think this is a perfectly nice campaign for Lincoln City, but I feel like it could be a little more focused. Differentiation is challenging, and you know that's true when you go on a competitor's website, and the first thing you see is they're touting their seven miles of beach, just like you're trying to, and we know that's probably not true.
It's a lie.
It's a lie. Nevertheless, they're saying it, so maybe it's fake news, but it's still on their website. So Rockaway Beach is trying to, trying to scoop your acreage there. So Rockaway Beach is trying to, trying to scoop your acreage there. So sometimes we'll do an exercise like this where we actually, we'll sort of plot out taglines, because taglines are usually reflective of positioning statements, and positioning statements are usually reflective of brand identities. So this is kind of like a shorthand way of trying to figure out who's, who's trying to say what, who's trying to carve out a personality based on different things. And we could kind of translate these, starting with Warrenton and Astoria. They're saying in their tagline, pure character. And what that's really about is it's kind of capitalizing on historic charm that you find when you go to that area. Seaside, tagline is, it's easy to Seaside, clearly they've planted their flag on family fun. Where Memories Become Traditions, that is, I think it's Rockaway, yeah. And that's all about sort of the romance. Tilowa Coast, it's The Natural Choice, that's all about, again, the natural beauty. Pacific City is trying to be your little beach town with their tagline. They're just putting it out there. We're uncomplicated, you know, get sand in your shoes and kickback, it's just your little beach town. We have Seven Miles of Smiles, that's really trying to capitalize on the long beach and the small-town mindset. Newport is saying, discover Newport, Oregon, trying to highlight all the unique things that they feel that they have. And then all the way down to the Coos Bay, North Bend, that's the tagline there is Oregon's Adventure Coast, and they're really trying to sell you on the adrenaline adventures, you know, stand-up paddle boarding and all that. And then all the way to Bandon, our attractions are always open. They always pair that line with a big outdoor image. You know, these are our iconic vistas, and they're always open. So it's all about natural beauty. This is the point where I'm going to stop sharing the background research that we did, and Scott's going to share a background research that you guys did, and share it with us.
And Scott, just introduce yourself.
Yeah, for those that don't know, I'm the Marketing Manager of the V C B. My name is Scott Comfort, and somebody might be familiar with the focus group and some of the research we did over the last couple of years, somebody maybe not as much. We're going to just do like a Reader Digest version of it, just to kind of bring you up to speed to know how that pairs with the work that V P N did for. So I'm just going to take a few seconds here and walk you through kind of some of the conclusions that were drawn from those groups, which kind of fed into this project. So really, the structure that we had, we made these positioning boards, and we talked with a lot of folks in town and came up with 24 different concepts that could describe Lincoln City. And whether those were, they were all true, but whether or not that was the reason for people visiting, that's what we wanted to find out. So we created 24 unique statements and translated them into boards with imagery and kind of a statement and a title. We also created a moderator guide so that each group was consistent, followed the same format, so we were able to compare apples to apples on the, all the data we got from it. We also gave participants incentives. So we got, we gave them all a $50 restaurant gift card, thinking that, hey, that money's just going to be spent right back here in the community, gives them some kind of skin in the game and, and the arista participate. So that, people were very appreciative of that. And then we used our lodging partners primarily to recruit participants. We also did two groups at the farmer's market, so that was more of us interacting with kind of an intercept type of situation. But really, we held them in hotel lobbies, we did them at E R Ds. And so we tried to get kind of a cross-section of the different lodging partners we had in town, knowing that we were going to catch the people from 50 miles away, which would then be classified as our visitors. So then the methodology on that was, we started off with just pure gutting and a general discussion on travel, and just what motivated people to travel, where they like to go, those general type of things. And we talked about the general impressions of Lincoln City. And then we went through our position statement exercise, where we went one by one through these different boards, and elicited their reactions and responses, and whittled it down to like a top 10, and then we really challenged them to put it into a top one or two, and maybe a one or two after that. Just that, we didn't want to blow it down to one answer, but generally to kind of get a feel for, was there overlap within these different groups? And then we ended it with just a conversation on general changes that would make Lincoln City a better destination. And we got answers from things like, oh, we just need a steakhouse, or we need this. But there were a lot of things like having walkable districts and biking areas, and a lot of kind of commonalities that make a lot of sense that people would like to see down the road. So the first group we did involved 2005, and so it was after the summer season, so naturally we got empty nesters. And having gone through the whole positioning exercise and whittling down to kind of these top two, three positioning statements, we found out that what the empty nesters were looking for, what they called Lincoln City as a relaxing destination with pleasant surprises for those who look, surrounded by natural beauty, and follows seven miles of beach to explore. So that really came from this Seven Miles of Smiles concept we had, this Zen Zone concept we had, and this idea behind treasure, from those could be natural beauty, it could be kind of the floats, it could be a lot of the antique type of stuff. So that's what we saw from empty nesters. And the next group, we did it in the summer of 2016. So we actually talked to families that time, and we thought, oh, yeah, we're going to hear kind of the same things. And there were some overlaps, but we heard a different story from the families. The family saw Lincoln City as a family beach destination with lots to discover, anchored by seven miles of beach, and it's a convenient place to explore all the coast has to offer, knowing that they're going to go in instead of Newport, or up to the cheese factory in Tilowa. So they really liked that Lincoln City had a lot of lodging, that they could use it, explore it, but then, you know, come back each night and go north and go south and even into wine country, too. So family side of it. I drew some conclusions, which we, I think we, more than what we found, and we are, we found what we were not, kind of linking back to Ed's open comments. We found that Lincoln City was not perceived as a small town. That was loud and clear. People would say, oh, we have this great small town, and all these businesses. You're not small, it was seven miles long. Have you been there during the summer? It's busy, there's traffic. Okay, we're not small. We have that at all, but we're not really big city shopping. You know, we have some of those modern kind of outlets, but we don't have, it's more of that small business, mom pop type of stores. People are here to relax, not try new things. We really kind of, we tried this great place to try new things, tagline, experienceable travel type of thing, and it really was resonating with people. In fact, that position was amongst the poor performers on, on all the statements. So that's not why they're here. As I said, they don't do those things, but it wasn't the driver for them coming here. And that was the key to, to these groups. We're not known for nightlife, I don't think that's a terrible surprise. We're not seen as nostalgic or cool, old-fashioned beach town. And it was loud and clear that, and this is what we were trying to kind of get at, was people are here for the beach first and foremost, but what comes after that? Because we all know on the coast, people are coming for the beach. That's, that's the biggest factor. But what is it after that? And we also learned that Lincoln City's identity is poorly defined, and there wasn't a silver bullet that, aha, this is it, this is going to encapsulate everything. So that was kind of a, you know, we didn't get exactly what we thought we might, but we, we learned about who we weren't. We understood that maybe there wasn't a silver bullet, and that this is a deeper dive than we might initially have thought. We did, as part of the, not of the 2015 group, but of the 2016 group, we had a set of logo comps that were made up just to elicit some reactions out of people, and we included the V C B logo, the city logo, and a couple other logos in that group as well. We found that the newer logos were kind of all over the place, but the current city logos were the poor performers in that group, too, which again said that we have some work to do better. Just, we talked about a little bit of this, but just a touch on two other things. Some other research of the last couple of years, you know, the first report, it could be 11 years old, but it still holds true. Two kind of key takeaways that pertained to this project, I was, you know, it, it, it mentioned creating a tourism, branding development, and marketing action plan is one of its highest priorities. It also mentioned that we need to develop a brand and new identity and key messages. So that was loud and clear in the first report 11 years ago. We did a, V C B did a year-long survey from 2013 to 14. It was done through trade shows, events, online, and it just elicited a bunch of different responses from visitors. And one of the takeaways was that we just stepped out and established ourselves from other neighboring similar destinations. So we start to hear these similar things echoed in different research and different perspectives from visitors. So I think this project is very timely. If somebody has any questions about the research we've done.
What I would be curious about, because when you, when you ask people that are already here what they think, they've already made a decision to come here, so that bias is that, as far as the information we're trying to get. What, I'm not suggesting the following, but I'd be curious as to what you would think of the following. Having some type of booth in Seaside, Cannon Beach, and pick another one, go down there with a thousand floats, and ask the people that didn't pick Lincoln City, why they didn't pick Lincoln City. That, to me, would be very valuable information.
And we've had those discussions just about doing kind of out of markets, but scripts, knowing that these people have already made their decision to be here. And so, you know, we've already done that initial sell in one way or another, and it's important to figure out why aren't these other people coming? What is it about the perception that isn't right for them? What do we need to potentially fix? What kind of niches or, or groups are we not addressing? So I agree that finding a way to get that other input is important, too.
At the same time, they go home with the float. Ah, Lincoln City.
Reminder.
We're not going to throw it away.
No, no, we know that.
So if our, if our focus is to draw people here with a destination, are we also validating the people who chose to live here, and why they retain living here? And do we meet their needs? They see the beach every day. Is there something special that we're not providing? I can see that in our schools, that, you know, needs that we need to build upon to keep them there. But we, we don't talk about those things that would enhance people to become more stabilized and remain here. Is that not part of anything?
That's not part of what the V C B, the V C B research is. This is why this is a city manager project, and this is why Ron is going to spearhead the whole effort to go out and talk to stakeholders which will be in Lincoln City. If you're talking about information we haven't collected yet, but this is the project that will help us collect it.
Because we have this other project going on, Imagine Lincoln City, and that's going to go out and talk to the people, too. And then we have this project talking to the people. And then we have the police department going out and talking to people. And then we're going to have the sewer people going out and talking to people. I should hope they don't get tired of talking to us, but still, but the two.
We're also sharing information. I mean, Richard Townsend will be feeding everything that he's learning through Imagine Lincoln City into this project through Ron's office.
So we have the Imagine, and we have the logo building are somehow intertwining the feedback, and we're going to come up with perhaps a surprising that meets both needs?
Right. It's complimentary. And, you know, the research should be complementary. We should be hearing basically the same thing through Imagine, that we're going to be hearing through the branding and positioning groups, the talk to citizens of Lincoln City. And one should validate the other.
And when will this conclude, this project? October, December, like the other ones?
How bad of a plan, aren't we? I mean, ideally, we were shooting for kind of, I think, end of calendar year at the latest. There's no hard and fast deadline that says we have to be done by this date. I think when everything makes sense and it's, we feel like we have a good recommendation to make, that's when we're going to wrap things up. So if we're still getting inputs, then we need to make sure we get all the inputs, because this isn't something we want to readdress in five years and say, oops, sorry, we missed on this. We want to make sure that this is a solid choice moving forward, and that we can really kind of hang our hat on it today, but also evolve it over time to where this might work 20 years from now. And it might not look exactly the same, but it's based on those same inputs and feedback.
So it sounds like the two are kind of concluding together, sort of toward the end of the year.
They have to, yeah.
That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, and they're not competing efforts. You know, they're, they're complementary, and that's the word.
Well, I would imagine we're trying to, you know, reach all the people who are in Lincoln City, or who choose to visit or live here, and expand.
Or have businesses. That's what I'm saying. It's just making sense, actually, and scope accounts for all the states. What was the percentage of the, the data you collected of people that live in town?
No, it was mostly visitors. I, I want to say there was only one or two participants out of the entire group, because we weren't targeting locals at that point. We were, we were looking for people 50 miles or more away, because this was visitor data at that time.
Even at the farmer's market?
Yes. We're actually surprised by that, just, we thought we would get a heavy local representation, but there were a lot of visitors at the farmer's market. We were, we were surprised by that.
Do you ever ask people who are selling their homes why they're leaving? As a general question, like, what is it that you don't want to be here for anymore?
That's, that's sort of our wheelhouse.
Yeah, yeah, but I know it's not V C B, but I mean, it's this whole branding thing. What is it?
What I was going to, I think I was going to say, what I see is what the Imagine, Imagine program is doing, the outreach, and how, how do you see Lincoln City in the future? And what is it? And to me, that's different than what you're doing. And so I don't see those coming together. I mean, I see the timing overlapping. I don't know why this is first until we get to, I keep pointing to Richard over there because he's adding that up, but I don't see, I don't, I can't see where they come together like this, because you're mostly, you've been describing what's out there in the Valley and how to get them here. And that is one thing. And I used to be one of those people that would go back and forth and back and forth. But, and I'm, and some of the Imagine might also include some of those people, too, so we might have some overlapping things. But we don't know what it is that we want to be yet. It just seems this carton for the horse or something, because we don't, that should help drive what you're doing. If this is how we want to be as a city, then that's how we want to do our branding. So I'm having a hard time with the timing.
I think the question is a couple of times where it's, what we're doing has to work today with what we have today, with who we are today, and it has to be something that can evolve over time to be what we want to be in the future. So I think these two maybe aren't going to connect just today, but they are going to have to line up down the road, to where we have some of these master planning efforts going into the comprehensive plan, the parks master plan, you know, maybe at one point we have the tourism master plan, that they all have to talk to each other. They're all serving different purposes, but the, the brand that we're developing today has to be, we can't promote something that we want to be, because we don't have it yet. And so to make that brand promise to people and to get them here and not deliver on that, we're not going to do ourselves any favors. So I think we have to take what we have today, build an identity around that, keep in mind where we want to go in the future, and kind of push for that evolution as it comes.
Scott, you know, before anyone moves here, they've been a tourist first. And we have, we always say we have a tourist economy, which we do, but we have, about half our economy is transfer payments, I mean retirees. And part of the, this town's success is going to be attracting retirees. And I'm wondering the wisdom of marketing when we do our positioning strategy and marketing. I didn't hear any of the towns, it looked to me like anyone was marketing to baby boomers, you know, who are going to be our next, our next residents, actually. And I'm just wondering, perhaps part of our, our strategy would be to include where 80% of the nation's wealth is, is in baby boomers. They have the money to spend, they have the time to spend, and they'll be looking for places to move to, so we get them on both.
Yeah. Well, I think Lincoln City is kind of a challenge, because we don't have that inherent built-in magnet where we have to go after a lot of different groups. And yes, we should currently look at the boomers, because that's where the money is now, and there's a lot of reason they're moving here, but we also have to look 20 years down the road when those boomers are another 20 years older, and how do we attract, how do we speak to millennials? I mean, that's a challenge in the marketing world as it is, to figure them out, but to know that they're the ones creating new traditions and all of those things, to where, yes, we want to look at these people that are moving here, but those people that are creating new traditions and are potentially move down forward 50 years from now. So it's kind of this just cyclical thing, that we have to look at all these different segments, they all have different needs. We don't have that one inherent identity that says, this is who we are, this is why we're here. And so we have to try to establish something through who we want to be through the Imagine project, who we want to be through our communication efforts, and where, what does that look like 25 years from now? I don't, I don't exactly know, but that's why we need to have these conversations. And we need to at least start with something so that we're consistent in our efforts. And that's not to say this is going to be the bible forever. We need to be able to move on from it and to evolve it and to change, and if we take a different direction, we need to revisit the project. So, but we need something now that starts to align all of these efforts, so that the resources that we're spending, we're spending wisely, so that we're getting as much bang for our bucks we can with who we're talking to. And we have to identify who those, you know, by talking to Portland and the Valley, we're going to inherently exclude some people, but we can't talk to everyone. We have to talk to the 8%, because we just don't have the money to do it for everyone. It's just going to be a challenging, evolving cycle. It's just gonna be a challenging, evolving cycle.
Ron? I guess, I'm, as I was reading and listening to the branding concept, and I guess under the umbrella of branding, I'm assuming there's room and should be room for economic development. We need to keep that in mind of, you know, the work you and Allison are doing, however we come up with a brand, doesn't discourage any kind of attraction or business in the business.
Sure. As a matter of fact, what I've kind of heard from you are different marketing campaigns, but with some, but have similar thread that runs through them. So for example, Ed is going to be dealing exclusively with visitors. His job is to market the city to bring visitors here. Allison's job is going to be in the area of economic development, make it an attractive place. She also works and also have people moving in, housing, retirement places. All of those are different functions in the city. But what we're hoping will come out of this branding is a thread that goes through all of them.
So to tie into that, you know, when you were speaking earlier, Ed, you were saying that when you drive into Lincoln City, you'll have the common typeface, color palette, things like that. Is it not just stationary business cards, digital marketing? Are you talking about storefront street signs? How will they know that when they're in Cutler City, you're still part of Lincoln City? Under what logo branding aspect of Cutler City will know, tell you that you're still Lincoln City?
The project that we're doing here, again, it's gonna go past visual awareness and branding and whatnot. And keep in mind, a lot of it's not gonna come from my department, it's gonna come from the streets department, it's gonna come details on the size of city vehicles, wayfinding, signage. Everything should have a common visual moving field. And if we do it right, and everything's interrelated, and right now it's not, I mean, the city has 13 different logos and every time we do something, it looks different than everything else. If we can hit all those touchpoints, everything that the city's involved with that results in something that somebody can see in town, if it's all the same color palette, all the same typeface, all the same looking field, if we have a graphics standards manual that tells you how to do signs and wayfinding and all those things, yeah. And it's probably not gonna happen overnight, as I have left in a lot of money, but I'd like to see this chip away and to where, from the time you see the Welcome to Lincoln City sign to the other end of town, there's reminders that you're still in Lincoln City.
But I think that when I initially approached it, Scott, and started talking about this and said, we need some samples of the others, we don't get some ideas, and Scott put together a presentation for me to show to ours, but it also shows some very successful campaigns. And what I found with that that was fascinating was that the most successful campaigns we found was that the branding was not limited to just the governmental function. We started seeing the chamber, we started seeing other organizations that started picking up. And in their, in their book that gave all the regulations on using your brand, it was adaptable so that you could use them for other organizations. And so, it wasn't, it became, it wasn't just the city. And we don't wanna create a brand that only our government is going to use, we wanna spread it throughout the community.
So I think Kennedy Beach or visitors-ish, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So I have a question for visitors is, is there a significant difference between a corporate logo and a city logo in what you're trying to accomplish? Because when I think of things like Coke, Nike, Pepsi, A T T, now one of them says soda pop, tennis shoe, communications, nothing to do with any of it. Are we trying to accomplish too much by cramming too much into something rather than just a simple symbol? Is there a difference between the two?
I mean, having a unified look for all of them and making that simple, I mean, I feel like what we're gonna be presenting, definitely overly complicated, but I think it's something that each one of them is something everyone can hopefully identify with in the down. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I remember back in my early sales days, I listened to someone talk about the slick brochures you get at car dealerships. And you're saying they're not created to entice you to buy a car, they're created to confirm your purchase. You take it home, you go, oh, I made the right decision. I just, I fear that this is just gonna be kind of a wasted effort for attraction purposes rather than just a confirmation. So when they see that and will recall, hey, I had a great time there, oh, yeah, that was what it was about, not, gee, isn't that a great logo? I wanted to go there.
Play a kind of spell and hopefully a good logo is gonna be a sample for you guys. It validates who you are.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. It validates, it's a confirmation of an experience that's already occurred, not an expectation of an experience to happen.
I think it honestly can be both.
I just would like an example. That's all I meant there.
Is there a timeline? Like, we have to have this completed by May or a year from May or, because it seems to me there's still a lot evolving about who we are and what we are. We're starting to have conversations with Native American tribes in our area, which will here belong before us. And I'm sure there's various historic things that would be of interest to tourists and people who live here, and not to mention the geographic, scientific discoveries that take us from here to Yellowstone and, you know, the volcanic regions that are yet to be highlighted in our area. So I was just wondering, maybe we haven't got all our stuff together, and if there's a deadline, I don't wanna pass the deadline, but I have some more stuff.
I guess before, there's no hard deadline, but I think we still, we need some communication tool today because we don't have one. And I think the longer we wait, the further behind we're going to be. You know, I wanna use the resources that we have in the best way that we can, and that comes with patent background. And the brand is not just like, what I think the focal point is, is the brand and the identity. The logo is a communication tool of that identity. And so, it's a piece that we use. The logo isn't the end all be all, it's really developing that identity that can change over time. It's not something that is inherently built into Lincoln City. We need to help steward that and we can direct it, which is an opportunity at the same time versus something like a story where you really are dug into that historic kind of, you know, just all that rich history that has in, like, Newport, you're that working waterfront, it's just built into your identity, and you can't get away from that. We have the opportunity to really craft that a little bit more with that.
So if I could, Scott, just getting back to what was asked for at the beginning, I think it was positive that we will be in the first focus. Do you want a specific statement from each of us that says, here's what I think it is?
Zach, start moving. Congratulations to the next part of this presentation because we have some things for you to look at so that they're not telling us, but they're phasing it off themselves.
So, we did take a stab at crafting that statement, and we had to connect all the dots among all of these pieces of research and all of these perceptions and kind of start to put all of that in an analytical harbor and just kind of like figure out where to go. So, we know the purpose of positioning, we've been through this ad nauseam, it's to occupy the distinct identity or position relative to competing brands or one of the visitor. They also have to be sort of like, big picture, big umbrella, they have to house the whole region underneath them. These are some criteria that the V C B had put together for what they wanted positioning objectives to be. I'll just hit these really quickly. Wanted them to be based on a unique selling proposition that matches the guest experience, so it has to be true. The previous U S P was Oregon's biggest little beach town, which leverages the large linear scope and small town mindset. Previous campaign or current campaign being Seven Miles of Smiles. Wanted the positioning to establish brand clarity and a unified voice, so all those logos start to be replaced by one logo and one looking field. Create a visitor relevant V C B brand. We know that residents are also important, but this is really focused on drawing people to the region. And then present a future focused brand position that can span administrations, as Scott was saying, this is something that could be relevant now, could be adjusted, but also can incorporate your near term growth. I'm not gonna move my finger from this, but, okay. So that's what we were kind of charged with. Having done this for many years for many different types of companies and, yes, even regions, destinations, I've sort of come up with my own criteria for what makes a good positioning strategy. And the first thing is critical, it has to capture truth about your brand today. If it's not true, and we're selling something that's not true, that very quickly will run a grand. It's ownable to some degree, that's my caveat, because very few companies, products, regions are completely ownable in their positioning anymore. There's a lot of competition out there, no matter what category you're in, but you wanna at least make the effort. It's gotta be relevant to your target audience. If you say, this is who I am, and they go, no, it's not, you've lost that battle. And it can be the starting point for great creative. So that's one thing that we wanted to include here, but we did not explore, you know, print and TV and digital, like, we have not done that part of this. But certainly, the logo conversation will be interesting for everyone to see after this. So, just going back to some of those top positioning statements that Scott was referencing in the research, the ones that seem to rise highest out of that pile of 24 were, your home base on the coast, like Scott was saying, you know, come here and this can be the basis for your adventure north or south. Where you discover treasures, that was sort of starting with float hunt kind of mindset, but expanding it to other things as well. The zen zone was all about the relaxation, that we know those empty nesters were really excited about, and family beach vacation on the coast. So when I use the criteria that I just established, is it true? Is it ownable? And is it relevant? We see that some of these are, some of these fare better than others. Home base on the coast, yes, it's true. Is it ownable? Yes, you are right in the middle approximately, and people can go all around from Lincoln City. Is it relevant? Yes, we know that people will come here and take little day trips and come back and enjoy what Lincoln City has to offer. Where you discover treasures, is it true? Yes. You will possibly discover a float, you will find a great hike, you will find a great restaurant, you will have a great experience. Is it ownable? Maybe, not completely sure if that is completely ownable. And is it relevant? Yes, people do like to find unique experiences when they travel, and it's something that's important. The zen zone? Yes, it's true. You can absolutely commune with the ocean and relax and have a great time in your, in your deck chair. Is it ownable? No, not really. Is it relevant? Well, it's relevant to those empty nesters that we talked to in the shoulder season, but families don't really want so much of that really. Families want excitement and attractions and things to see and do. The family beach vacation on the coast is the flip side of that because, yes, it's true, you can certainly have that in Lincoln City. It's not really ownable. We know we've got, you know, Cannon Beach and Seaside pushing that. And is it relevant? Well, not to people who want the zen zone. So you see, one of the problems of positioning is creating a big enough positioning umbrella that what you have to offer falls under it. So, we just wanted to go through those quickly and then sort of rethink, okay, really, what does Lincoln City have to offer? What is really fertile territory? And we came up with three positioning directions that we saw were worth pursuing. One, it's all about the coast. Two, follow the theme line, and these will be explained a little further on the next slide. And three, leverage your strengths. So what those three things mean. Number one, it's all about the coast. Your research tells us that people come to Lincoln City for the beach, but it's not really your umbrella, boardwalk, suntan kind of beach. What Lincoln City offers is the essence of the Oregon coast in all its iconic, rugged, and uncommercialized glory. It really truly is an anthemic coastal location. And I'm from New Jersey, I grew up according to the New Jersey Shore, this is completely different. So, one way you could craft a positioning statement around that would be something like, find your authentic Oregon coast experience at Lincoln City. And the support points, because those are critical, and you'll see, we just kind of rotate them for each of you, like in, true coast experience, complete with the visits and activities and fun that you expect, seven rounds of beautiful beaches, and more lodging, which means easy access and convenience. If you can't get a room someplace, it's not gonna be a great vacation. Well, you can get a room at Lincoln City because we have great lodging. So that was one approach that we thought was fruitful, we created it internally. Second approach was, follow the theme line, meaning, we heard a theme kind of emerging. We heard it when we first had our merchandising here, we saw it on TripAdvisor and Instagram, and we thought that this was an interesting thing, that much of what makes Lincoln City interesting seems slightly random. A world-class skate park, a lake right next to the beach, as you were telling. The world's shortest river, spicy kitchen. This is a place that seems to have majored in the unexpected. Why else would Lincoln City's biggest icon be a glass float hunt? So, if you were to try to write a positioning statement for that, it'd be something like, Lincoln City takes you off the beaten path and offers the unexpected. Support points for that would be, you're getting the true coast experience, all of the unexpected that make Lincoln City surprising, slightly offbeat and unique, a special place. And then more lodging, you can get there and it's, so that equals access and convenience. So that was another idea we thought was pretty interesting. The third approach, leverage your greatest strengths. This is where we would wanna focus on tapping into your destination's core competitive strength and leverage the intersection between what Lincoln City offers and what visitors want. So in this case, a positioning statement might look something like this. Start your Oregon coast adventure in Lincoln City, your headquarters at the heart of the coast. So this is really just more beach, more rooms, this is that strategy. More lodging, easy access and convenience, central location, easy access to our beaches and attractions and beyond, true coast experience, complete with the business activities and fun you expect. So these were three things that we thought were worth pursuing. And of those three approaches, when you kind of hold them up to the light of day and you ask whether each one is true, ownable, and relevant, we concluded that the authentic Oregon coast experience is absolutely true. Is it ownable? Probably not as much as we would like. Is it relevant? Absolutely. So while we really liked that, we thought it might be a little bit hard to make Lincoln City's version of the coast unique enough to really stand out against the competition. The unexpected, we do feel that it's true, we do feel that it's ownable, and we do feel that it's relevant because everyone likes to get off the beaten path and find cool things. And around the time that we were coming up with these and developing these, that Will Levitt Week article hit with the headline, Lincoln City is totally underrated and full of surprises. And we thought, okay, maybe we are on to something here. And the last idea, the headquarters of the coast positioning, it's absolutely true, it is ownable because you are centrally located and convenient and so forth, and it's relevant because we know people do travel that way in Lincoln City. But it didn't feel like it was exciting enough. It felt more tactical. It felt like, you know, park here and do your fit, you know, which didn't feel like Lincoln City was very excited. Whereas the unexpected, I mean, just, you know, wander into prehistoric, and that is unexpected. The skate park is unexpected, the Vieux Theater is unexpected. I mean, I was here over Labor Day and I kept saying to my husband, we have to get off one-on-one because as soon as you get out, you start to find all these little hidden gems. And it's a bigger place than Cannon Beach. Cannon Beach, Cannon Beach doesn't hide gems, they're out there waiting to be picked up. Whereas Lincoln City is like, oh, they're cool things, you know? We didn't get into the Jennifer Sears glass gallery, but we went to the Alder House glass gallery, which is also cool and a little bit off the beaten path. So, this started to feel interesting to us, like, we wanted to play here a little bit more. So if you tried to craft this as a more finished single sentence, you come up with something like, Lincoln City is full of unique surprises, big and small. Big as God's thumb and small as the float you find on beach. And, you know, I know this might sound a little bit like that treasures kind of positioning, but we think there's a bit of a different feel to this.
Question I might, and this is reopening old wounds, how much does our name hurt or help us?
We try to be agnostic about things like that. We try not to start working on an account and say, well, it's got these gemarins, so we can adapt to that. We're very adaptable, and we feel like, you know, if you make Lincoln City the place people wanna go, that name will represent the place people wanna go. I know that it's not a big city in the sense of, you know, New York or Chicago or whatever.
No, no, I mean in terms of each seaside or, you know, something that says where we are.
I think, I'm sorry. I was just gonna address that. So we do talk about that at the end of the logo and tag.
So we do talk about that at the end in the logo and tagline portion, is how do we work with that without obviously having to touch anything? So hopefully that will be a place that can add it, you have to bring a sense of place.
So, if you go back to the screen, you were talking about headquarters of the coast, which doesn't sound really exciting, words are not very exciting because most people don't read. But you are obviously correct in location, we have a small property in town. And to, to my people that I market to, I put pictures of the aquarium, and there are pictures of, of the old, of the bay in Newport. But I don't say, I don't put Newport, I put pictures of the whale, and pictures of the docks, you know, when someone reads that, how are they to know until they get here that, you know, all this snot in my backyard is just 15 minutes that way?
Yeah.
I don't know, it seems like something that we've missed.
Right.
They've got all those millions of dollars tied up, they've got the attraction, we have the rooms.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that will always be the case, so you'll always have that nice little advantage to work. I feel like, and we haven't, you know, done a full creative exploration of this idea of the unexpected, but I feel like if things can fit under that, then it's a sign of a good idea. So if being close to other attractions such as the aquarium is an unexpected desirable thing about Lincoln City, then I feel like that's a good position, you know? So, let me take you a little further along here.
Okay. We gotta land right there before we go on.
We land right there, alright.
Before we go into Newport.
Okay. Do we feel like we should share some more? Oh, so this is part where I sit down, and my former creative.
So this single sentence is really, and there was a-
Before you, I'm sorry, just, it's housekeeping here, I don't know how long we plan on being here tonight, and how much time we spend on this and the other, any thoughts on that tonight? Do you have members? Do you want to call this an eight? How long do you think we're gonna be in the plastic bag discussion?
Too long.
Anybody?
If we need to postpone the plastic bag discussion, I'd like to, I think, bring you the box.
That's fine, that's what we're looking for. Okay.
I can talk real fast.
No, no, I'm not asking you to rush at all, I'm just trying to manage the time for tonight.
So, the single sentence was given to Yosh and our copywriter as well, and we gave them pretty much a full rundown of everything we just gave you, and they've been a part of this process, working with your team. And from that, they developed mood boards, which we're gonna share with you first, and then based off those mood boards, these are first initial, you know, logos that we'll share with you. So, again, these are not recommendations by any means, but more just us exploring what it would, what it would look like working off the single sentence we just shared with you.
That's part, the creative part. So, starting with the mood board. So, I, again, what Jen was saying, I took the creative brief, I tried to create some different mood boards that I've shared with Scott and then with the team, and either down to these two. So keeping it in mind, that single sentence, thinking about the unexpected, but also thinking about your competitors along the coast and throughout Oregon, Pacific Northwest, how could you really differentiate yourself? And so the two, we kind of landed on this sense of carefree and bold, it's a mood that we can go behind. It seemed like the color palette, which I apologize, it's a little funky on the, a little bit of a mystery, I'm very a little weird, but the people seemed to really like the carefree Pacific Northwest color palette, but they also wanted some punch to it, some emphasis, again, with the unexpected, so being able to add in some kind of bold element.
Let me just jump in here, really.
Oh, sure.
If you can see, it's much clearer on the screen.
Okay.
You got the handouts, I made a little bit of a thing on there.
We also went into typography, and it seemed like the worst stance there, cleaner type, it was field, again, to that range of colors, baby colors. Going into logos, this is the lower left-hand corner, it seemed like something that felt a little bit more crafted and unique, and the carefree zone was great, but also thinking about, again, bringing in the concept of bold logo that. And then to be even a little bit, a few steps ahead, you know, how, what are those other visual representations when it comes to photography? How do we treat that pattern design? People seem to really like the carefree, the kind of handcrafted, illustrated, hand-drawn feel, but also wanting to add in a little bit of porkiness that the bold shows as well. So again, as Jen mentioned, the logos we're about to share with you are just the starting point, it's for us to have conversation. We narrowed it down to four, which we feel very, directions that we can kind of start a conversation around.
And Yosh probably designed-
A lot.
A lot, a lot that we really pared down, and we really pushed to make sure that this fit against the brief, and fit against what we had seen with the competitors, so.
And that's the thing, with each one of these, you know, after designing one, I had to look at the brief, and I'm like, does this whole true, does this prove the brief? Because otherwise, it's not gonna have any likes to move forward. So, option one, there was talk about a wordmark. Lincoln City's working with a wordmark, I apologize, it's a little contrasted a little light, but working with the curators, having something of a little bit of character, it's also a little bit of a nod to, I guess, 60s, kind of the '70s t-shirt throwback, but also the high contrast in some of these makes it, gives it some punch and some high energy. And then, with each of these, because it's kind of hard to picture the world just on a white slate, I'm trying to apply them to just like t-shirts, polos, I call it, it's your business cards in the corner, a band, whatever. So hopefully it gives you kind of a sense of how this can look outside of just putting it on the screen. And just so you know, I have a slide at the end that shows them all side by side, so we can kind of compare them all at the same time. Option two, so as you were talking about, does it hurt us to not have beach or coast or something in, in the name? So having a logo that really kind of touched on the beach, but wasn't explicitly the ocean.
And we've greased out the taglines for this portion, so that you're really just focusing on the design initially.
Yeah, thank you. So, with this, we have some modern lines that are kind of going through in and out of this badge logo, trying to showcase the ocean a little bit, but in a more modern way. And something that we thought would be kind of fun is depending on the time of day, maybe on your website, or some other type of digital format, what if the logo changed where the sun was setting, or the moon was in the sky? And just being able to add that unexpected element to your digital presence. T-shirts, you're gonna have to explain. We definitely have to picture a t-shirt, you want to be able to wear it and be proud of it. No one wants to wear it? Oh, oh, perfect. Perfect. So with this one, we wanted to kind of play off a soft and bold color combination, soft being the diamond in the back, and then these bold or punchier little icons along with the type. I think it'd also be interesting to have some sort of system of iconography, in a way it kind of gives you a refresh, depending on how you want to use it, giving some flexibility, whether it's events or the perfect or whatnot, making a little bit more tangible.
Yeah, we, you know, this was one of those where we said it works today, and then doesn't work in the future, and we feel like it's flexible, where as you guys grow and develop, it can also adapt.
And the final one, again, trying to craft this more retro type of typeface, having a lot of personality, I mean, that's something every time we've come to visit, I just feel like it uses so much personality, and how can your logo have that as well? Also, the composition of it makes it great for a lot of different formats, specifically for web and mobile presence, which obviously a lot of people, because they think this is, are gonna be looking at it on their local devices. And so we have two options here, where it could actually just be the wordmark or the block with the visual of the ocean as well. But we feel like the color palette itself also lends itself to being more this coastal town, but with some pops of color, with that kind of standing orange as well. So here we have the all kind of side by side, and this is here for town, for restaurants, so that way you can kind of see them and compare them, and hopefully the application pages kind of helpful, also give it that sense of place. Any questions? Obviously, I know it's a lot to kind of digest all the words, if you guys have any additional questions, but I'll leave. Alright, we will watch the headlines. So, option one, more to explore. So, the more, it kind of elevates the people's expectations of what Lincoln City has to offer versus the explore, you know, conveys a mindset of our target, suggests, you know, this is a place to want to spend some time and not just a stopping point. And also, the shortened tagline compared to some of the longer ones, obviously it makes it helpful for people to remember it. As a designer, I love short taglines, so it always works really well on my designs, but it cuts my business. A different side of the coast. So, the different sides kind of nod back that Lincoln City is not like every other beach town along the 101, and the coast is that language that anchors Lincoln City as part of what people expect in a coastal location. Have your sense of adventure. So, have conveys a sense of preparation and anticipation, and then sense of adventure obviously evokes that spirit of possibility, surprise, and fun, and tied back to it. And where curiosity meets the coast. Curiosity, you know, it engages a mindset that hints to a sense of discovery, you see discovery in a lot of other logos, and I felt like this is a really more unique and fresh word that can be used to describe that, meets obviously friendly intersection between curiosity and the coast, and again, the coast representing that true Pacific Northwest to be all. So they're all side by side.
Question, if I'm right, I don't see anything about relaxation, zen, which seemed to be the biggest reason people came here, is that what I heard earlier? Did you come here to?
The empty nesters.
Well, I heard you were talking about that, it was a high response.
Yeah, but it, it's split between the summer groups and the fall groups. The, the empty nesters, who are holders, the baby boers that Kip was talking about, they come in, they relax, they park. The, the younger families, the folks we talked to in the summer, excuse me, they're more active, and zen, we didn't resonate that one with them at all, because that's not the experience they have here. So that, that piece is split.
The curiosity one reminds me, I think, too much of Newport with their wax museum and the Ripley's Believe It or Not, just right off the bat, and I think Till Look has something about it being an adventure or something, as if we're just giving a little input.
Yeah.
So, just immediately, that's where those two things are, bottom one is Newport, and then the third one is Till Look, but different side of coast is cool.
Maybe you could take both of them together in that, relax and explore.
Yeah.
Get both.
Yeah.
Or to explore rhymes against the catch.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any comments on the logos? Do you want to?
The N was way too tricky to read, I think, it looks like a J, so it's like, there's no, yeah, that Lincoln City, that top left, you know, so it's really, yeah, it looks like a U and a J or something different, and it wasn't really, didn't really-
It's like the 60s.
Feel, yeah, it wasn't around.
From what I can remember.
I know, so is it just the word, or is it the, what if those are still open to something that's more wordmark?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still open for words, it's just that particular font, spacing, it's kind of, that's just a tight, a little too tight.
Something like you'd see at 7-Eleven when you went in to get one of those slurpee.
I really like the second one.
Second one being, there's another second one being this one.
No, the one with the sun in it, the sun in it.
Get to it, you're so.
I'm sorry, I'm a scale and HR director.
The truck with the whale tail, is that the spirit of people day?
Yeah. I was thinking of that bottom left one, if the different departments, the VCB, the whatever had that logo, and then that icon could be that department, or that whatever part of the city.
Yeah, I actually liked that bottom one better. The one on the right, but, oh, I'm sorry, but it looks like a brick or something, it's like, you can see all the work that comes out of it. And then, this one, it seems like the bottom left, it could find it along the resources.
I like the shape of the top right, I can see that on the street signs very clearly. The bottom left is, I do like the whale tail, I do like it for the differentiation, just because a visitor's, you know, oh, people day is more whale, so they do, they shouldn't use that, whatever. And the bottom right, I just think it's too geeky, I'm just, it reminds me of the 60s movie intro.
The, the top right, there could be like sand at the bottom, you know, there's no sands, there's no, I think the show like-
The angry.
Beach, yeah, you know, yeah, you're looking at a ocean.
It's true.
It's like it's a duck's fan.
Yellow and green.
That's just like the song by-
What's wrong?
I'm not big on the duck's fan, but I'm really, it's like a duck's fan, right?
Yeah, I'm not big on the color of the top right, but I do like the shape very much.
I like the shape.
Potentially, like, if we wore without the lid, maybe a little more true blue, and it's kind of some projection as well, or if we were in the sea.
Is this all the four we're gonna have to choose from?
That's it.
That's it.
We're not choosing. What do you like, what don't you like? We're trying to get your impression.
I still have feet, but I'm really shy. It's like, there are a lot of words.
I have a test yet, I promise.
I think the goal is to receive feedback from you guys, so we can go back and continue exploring and refining if there are some that we feel like that we can still work with and adjust and keep on the table, or if we need to completely push into new territory. So it's just kind of getting your initial reactions and making sure that, are we on the right path, or are we-
And if we don't get your reaction, then we don't know where to go. It is interesting for you old folks that remember back in the 60s, because that Lincoln City went down the bottom right, that's the same font that's used in Lost in Space. It reminds me of all the 60s movies.
The one in the top right to me, though, is 90s.
Top right.
Yeah, top right, close to 90s.
That doesn't feel-
Yeah, I'm not particularly loving for the font, but I do like that shape.
I think that's an important thing to remember, I mean, it is hard to think about these in a really abstract way, that all these elements can potentially change, but thinking, you know, maybe I like the way those lines look, but if it was in a different font or different colors, and thinking about, you know, who do you picture that, and is that a direction you would look completely toward?
One thing that I like about the top right, bottom left, is the ability to add different images into it, I think that's a really cool feature.
Which one, Ron?
Whether it's the bottom left or the top right, they both have the ability to add a different feature, so I think that's cool.
I'd like to see Lincoln City, if you're gonna pick that one bottom left, if that were filled in black, or somebody had made it jump out, because that outline just fades same as the tail, it'll go kind of fade out, whereas it was coming in.
For me, when I think of the coast, I think of blue skies, a blue ocean, and so the green kind of threw me, because I don't think, I mean, yes, we have green here, but I think we have more blue, and then-
It's the Lincoln Sun.
Yes. Does that look like a little bit of a string? But the other stadium is just the way, I see the whale tail, and I think of people day, because that's what everybody was there in.
Then I can show variations of that, but don't, don't lock yourself into that.
Again, it'll, I know.
Otherwise, it's here.
But I also like the different circles, too, even making the glass walls decided, I mean, it's really-
I see, I saw a couple whales today, so I, I actually like the whale tail, because I can see them.
Yeah.
I, I know you see more of them, and it's more consistent, and they use it more.
Well, and they have the seawall to capitalize on, we can stop it, I wish, but, a nice differentiation.
You know, I'm thinking about it from a HR standpoint, of attracting employees and people to come and work in our city, to work here, and if this is more marketing, you're more, you know, different things, but, you know, the one thing I think that lacks is not that many.
And I have a question, and maybe this is something Richard Accello can pipe in on. And I have a question, and maybe this is something Richard Accello might be on. Do we own this? Once we adopt it, do we, is there copyright? Can shop owners use it freely? We would own it, we want to own it, but we also want to create regulations whereby people can use it. In other words, so they're going to be taking this, if somebody wants to use this, they can, but it has to meet our requirements. They can't change the font, they can't change the colors, that comes down. So, for example, if you look at that, if you wanted to have Chamber of Commerce underneath it, or a school district, you could, but the branding will make it so that it's copyrighted in such a way that it has to be, they can't change, they can't change it. So, any business could use it on their website, so long as it stuck with that? That's the idea.
Okay. Because Ben does a really good job of that, they have their core logo, and many businesses in town will feature that same logo in their shops.
You know, that's done a great job, that Columbus, Ohio, there's this fantastic how they got that.
Yeah, as a part of our deliverable, we have a brand book that will show everyone how to use this logo, so they are using it the appropriate way. There's not all these additional logos coming out of this, that are always consistent.
I also have, with every brand book I think I've ever made to a client, the idea isn't to hand off to you to something so specific, it gives you some gift, really, to make it your own within some sort of art realm. Can you tell me how the, with the, I'm sorry, you have the bold and another word?
Chair.
Can you tell me how the colors were applied before, did I pick one or the other, or do a combination of both? It was supposed to be kind of a combination of both, as you can see, some of these, you know, you have more of those hair fronds, like a northwest color, than try to add in like a different, like a pop color throughout all of the color palettes, and again, none of these are set still, but we don't really want to throw it in your face, we didn't want it to be seaside, didn't know what these two kids like, so how do you kind of marry that, the northwest, but also some energy as well?
So, if I could just, back to the chairs, the old chair, Allison, if you want to jump in, introduce yourself, so it's for the record.
Allison Robinson, Urban Rendell, and I'm not a...
And I don't know if you're being picked up by the microphones from out there, come on up.
I lean towards the bold, I prefer the bold, and I like the versatility of the second and the third one, like Mr. Chandler said about being able to vary what's happening in that second one with the sun, the half moon, I really like that a lot. Again, I like the versatility of the third one, but I feel like the colors are a little too pastel for me. And it also reminds me of some developments, like Seabrook, or I see a lot of branding of master plan communities, and so, we're kind of picking up a master plan community feeling instead of a community broader city. When I see the upper, I love all four, I just want to say, but it's hard to think out which one you're going to kind of run with first a while. The one on the upper left, I keep thinking of Mountain Dew. But I like how Lincoln is played up, and the city kind of goes away, I think that's interesting. And I like the fourth one, I like that, it kind of looks like a woodblock print, but I definitely, I think if I were to choose, I know we're not choosing, we're just...
Which ones are the two of those?
The upper right.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, and we had kind of played with, is there a whale tail or some other icon anchored in the bottom of this logo, but I think the other thing is less is more, and with any of these logos, the more elements you have, the more complex it becomes, the less you put up, right? So, going simpler, I think, is probably the route we want to go, but it's not the same with those developments, it can't be one way.
I could see a whale tail even in that scene on the upper right, and mine, where, you know, it's in the sun.
You know, the Lincoln City one with the whale's tail, I think you've done a nice job with that coloring, the whale's tail, because that's a traditional beach color that you have, that says beach two different ways, one the tail, one the color.
That actually reminds me of what I was going to say, so I do like the old color palette, but I think it was important to still bring in that Oregon coast, otherwise I think, you know, if there's a chance that I'd be mistaken for California, or someone who puts so much vibrancy, and being anchored in something that's real, with the energy of the falls, and freezing the thing you're playing throughout it.
I can follow up on that a little bit. I like the bold, too, but if this, these colors are carrying over into signage and wayfinding and such, I think you need something bolder, because it needs to be able to be read instantly. And the more pastel colors here, that we kind of faded out a little bit, so I think that's a substantial concern in terms of signage.
Can you just introduce yourself? Introduce yourself.
Richard Townsend, Applied Director.
No, I think that's great, and honestly, this is a great example of how having two light-up colors on something like a projection, things you can't always control, is important, so it's definitely a good test for us for what we go, when I go back to the drawing board, to make things start kind of more vibrant.
So, can you mix, say, like, the bold colors with these, not the one on the top left, with the other three, you can mix-match those colors, could you answer?
Kirsten Rodenbeck, Kenny Library Director. Just a quick question, when we have the final logos, is there going to be a version that can be reproduced in black and white as well?
Absolutely.
That's one thing that I'm thinking, is the one on the upper right, I really love it, but I'm not, I'm having trouble picturing how it might look if we're printing stuff out and it's just on a black and white printer.
Right, so that would be, we're challenging, what I do is creating different gradients of like a dark texture that translates that bigger, right? It's not as clear as, you know, seeing this in black and white. And there'll be an adjustment, usually what I do is full color, a great scale version, a black and white, or what I call white color, and then a reversed white, because I know it's really popular, put it on a photo or something for contrast.
I've got a big question, what is non-English, I see...
The timeline. No, it's funny, in school, they always teach you to put text that you don't want people to focus on in Latin, but I have found, time and time again, that everyone's like, what's that mean combined? And so, you know, you're still still looked over, that I have to focus on.
But that's where the tagline will live.
What does it mean?
I'm not sure, I guess I'm still thinking, is there something else?
Well, one thing, too, to consider is, we've talked with Allison and Urban Rendell and others, is the idea of design standards, and as we start talking about loaning money for facade improvements, we've talked about, all right, we're going to say these things have to be included, whether it's a color or a thematic element or things like that, and I'd love to start talking about these different color palettes, and how that will translate throughout the city.
And I think that's another thing to remember with the bold, as beautiful as vibrant it can be, do you really want to have pink house next to bright blue in the sea, you know what I mean? So, it's playing with that balance of like, how can those elements get tied in with that theme to overpower?
Right, because we're kind of seeing that, I don't mean to denigrate anyone, but Ocean Lake is kind of looking like a circus tent right now, it's so many bright bold colors, and I sure would be able to say, look, here's an idea, you know.
Well, this is going to hang down.
But it's going back to the unexpected, those colors, that's where you can have that sense of, where you'll find, just will pop a bright blue or a lime green somewhere, it's unexpected, but done in a beautiful way.
So, I got a question. On the, the one on the right, top right, what does the black stand for at the bottom?
I was just trying to go for depth and kind of movement with those lines, creating this overlapping feel, also, you know, just creating that depth, if you were looking out towards the ocean, or in, or maybe even the depths of the ocean as well.
Yeah, I just, and then why the sun, what does that represent, that no one else has?
I mean, I just remember going to the beach as a kid, and watching the sunset, and just obviously the sun being an icon, with the ocean and the horizon, and again, as an element of potential in a digital platform, where depending on the time, and things can change, I thought that would be, again, a fun and expected way, to show the beach and not just, you know, typical waves, I guess.
I'm just curious, should I, like, what would you see if you took Lincoln City out? Would you be able to identify if that was still Lincoln City, or if there was something unique there that would still be there? Because you take the bottom one out, Lincoln City, you still got the whale tail there.
Well, I suggest we're having brand outlines, it's going to be important, this is an example where you would probably never have Lincoln City there, an instance where you would separate Lincoln City out of that atmosphere, and really, really, maybe, obviously, never people leave, turn Lincoln City out. Maybe the tagline or the department, those things can live outside of it, but you don't always want a lockup of all those things, but I understand what you're saying, creating again, that unexpected space.
If that were in Lincoln City, Nebraska, that might be the hayfield or something, you know, I mean...
Maybe it should say on the column, the beach, instead of Lincoln City.
It's not right, you admire both, so it would be relevant ownership in the other one.
Well, these are, so, that positioning statement that we felt about those requirements, that is, just to give a little bit of background, that's something that we do as a non-consumer-facing, sort of a platform for creatives to go on and develop, you know, print, and television, and digital, and maybe even website, and logo, and so forth, so if you, if we were able to explore all of those things, you would see that positioning statement really coming to life in a larger way. It's a little bit hard in a logo to really convey all of that, I know Yosh has been trying to call out for each where there's a bit of the unexpected, and in terms of whether it's unique, ownable, and relevant, I think that logos are a little bit more about how you dress versus how other people want to see you. You know, I think a logo is a little bit different in that sense than a positioning statement is. I think these should express the positioning statement, but I'm not sure that logos really are sort of uniquely defined in the way that a positioning statement is, but it's...
It's just one component to your toolkit, at the end of the day, to ladder it to that.
As we are going now, so this is our first focus group, and we'll hold a bunch more, and then we'll come back, I mean, we are finishing focus groups, so as, in all of that, and Scott's work before was with tourists, our focus group will also include residents, and so, I guess the one question I have, is to see if, as we go out and talk, if we're on the right track, is that the one thing that we heard from the tourists is that it needs to represent how we feel when we are here, and I'm guessing that would be the same kind of question that we would be asking of our residents, does this represent how you feel about your community? Am I right on that, or am I off based on that?
I would a hundred percent say that's correct.
I'm just writing it down, so I think it's a good thing to keep in mind as another way to evaluate.
I guess I'm kind of a little more practical on it, as long as it's not an embarrassment, I don't care. I mean, seriously, if I just go, you gotta be kidding me, I'm kind of neutral on it, whether it's any one of those, well, the bottom right is crazy, but, you know, just something simple. But I'll go back to a question ahead concerning symbols, say, the Nike, and the Coke, and the Pepsi, and all that, this is all pretty straightforward, this is, you know, here's our name, here's an element of our city, is there, is that just off, the way of facing, can there be a symbol of, is that even the right word?
No, I get what you're saying, I think those things kind of come with time, I mean, originally of all those logos, there was standards where you always had to have the Nike signature with the word Nike, and as it became this international brand, you can separate the Nike term and have a signature for it, as I said. I think as your logo evolves, five, 10, 20 years up the road, there can kind of come a symbol of it, whether it is the waves, or the sunset, or whatnot, but where we stand right now, it needs to have that lockup that includes the name with an icon, because it's not well-known enough to stand apart, if that makes sense.
So, staying with that, building on that, I guess that, you're touching the concern I have about the bottom left, so, today I'm a whale, tomorrow I'm a glass ball, I throw in the Noel, I'm a subway sandwich, you know, and it goes on and on and on, to however I feel that day, or whoever department, or to the library book, and I'm confused then of what Lincoln City is. I know it's all those things, but I'm having trouble envisioning that we have this book of approved, authorized symbols that could be inserted, that either businesses could pick from, or the city could pick from any given day, and back to the mayor's comment, you know, I'm, I too, I'll admit, I'm used to, you know, seeing and recognizing a symbol as a dominant statement, so I'm using that one, as much as I like, because Lincoln City does represent so many different things to do, and I like the idea, I'm just having trouble, you know, imagining, I've run out of T-shirts, or I have too many, that's what I'm saying.
So, I think that's where, as a city, maybe you only have four that represent the city as a whole, but then for departments, it's the book with city library, and you would always have to have those pieces of text next to it, but the thing that's going to remain consistent is however we treat this word, Lincoln City, and that's going to be the commonality between all of these, so no, depending on whatever you're using as your icon, people are going to understand that it's all part of the Lincoln family system. And I think that's also where leveraging other marketing and everything that's going to come from this brand positioning, it all kind of marries together and it tells a larger story.
Well, only because I'm, like I said, I'm used to a one symbol or something, and, you know, trying to think going forward, what might resonate, and serve multiple purposes too, so I like that aspect.
So, to play out the thing that a lot of people said they come for the beach, okay, so if you're standing at the beach, and you're looking north, you see Cascade Head, and if the text was a little bit different, and Lincoln, the top left, Lincoln was spaced out a little bit more, you could have the imagery of the Four Brothers, which is in Celeste Bay on that bottom left, underneath the L-I-N, having the sand beneath the city, and then the silhouette of Cascade Head underneath the L-N-N-N, so Lincoln City is sitting in the space from Celeste Bay to Cascade Head as what it is, and tie it, so it's just, I know the words are kind of funky, but they're letters, but... The imagery of the city.
Sure, the other thing I'd recommend everyone is to kind of think about, how does this word use down, to be really small?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, like, it's a super innovative idea, and how we play, and it's just, we have to think about just the size of this daily, but I just think that's a really interesting.
Well, I guess that's where I'm going to, and I'll drop it after this point. If I were to say to you, three very creative people, what could you conceive in a drawing, in a symbol, that would say Lincoln City without words, and you're not answering me today, but is there even an option for that?
To be totally frank, it was, that was a difficult part of it, I mean, there are so many things you can talk about.
I know, but if you're just to get together and say, you know, stamp, here's my stamp, we don't have to like it or love it, I just, I would be curious what you would conceive.
I think what's hard is when you, like, a lot of that imagery is, can be like the whale tail, like, you're trying to evoke a place, and so you might have something like a whale tail, but then it's blending in with everything else you're saying.
I'm not going to beat this one to death.
I mean, we definitely try to think about that.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. If AT&amp;T can get away with a Death Star.
But that also took time, right?
Well, no, they just rolled it out and said, here's what we are.
Well, I know, and we had it with the word AT&amp;T for a long time.
They didn't sit here and think about it, and we adapted to it, and recognize that is their symbol, so whenever I see it, I think that is their symbol, anyway.
But the role that AT&amp;T plays in someone's life is different than the role that Lincoln City plays.
Again, yes, I will be just a little closer, I'm going to drop right there.
No, I think that's a really valid, that's what I'm saying.
Rather than being symbolic with like the whale's tail, would there be any merit in putting the words beach town, Lincoln City? I mean, that would certainly answer the question, if you'd have to use to it from a whale's tail, you would know straight up, beach town.
Beachside.
So, beach anything.
Or concept.
Beach anything.
I have two thoughts. One of, one of the things that, one of the most, one of the things I see posted on Facebook by people who visit Lincoln City most is pictures of our sunsets and pictures of the sun rising. So that's why I think I resonate so much with that. But the other thing I'm thinking about is, I, when I go up north to Portland, I drag through Dundee and they've got those flags on the poles that identify them as Dundee as their wine country. And I can see that translated on our flag post, our seven miles from the beginning to the end.
You have the green cross or the green leaf.
In a different color, but I mean, I can, I can see that and connecting our seven miles with that kind of a visual.
More to sponsor it.
I think there's a lot of visuals you can kind of pull out, but something I think about with this one in the upper right, those bands, I mean, those can be different colors applied in different areas of your city on its own with some other technology. And it's that little design element that gets carried through. Maybe that's not explicitly the beach, but it all kind of ties together in a way, kind of like those banners of light fighting wood. I just love the different ways it plays.
I really like even the texture. It's very subtle, but I agree that it would be interesting to see how many colors can you get in there for going to something wild, crazy, like the Grand List or something that's, you know, all just gray and, you know, more conservative and elegant in the neighborhood or something like that. I like that there's texture in that. You can even just see a lot of this wrapped all in that texture, just the texture being something.
Mayor, the problem out of me bringing this to a close, that these guys are holding back home tonight. Did everybody get a chance to express what they think? And did you guys get what you need to go from here?
Yeah, I think so.
I can really talk for a second.
Sure. There's a couple things I'd like to throw out real quick, going back from the Brooks Report, way back when. Part of that is they went out with a little focus group and said, tell me what you think of when you hear the word seaside, a story, Lincoln City. And you pretty much followed exactly what they said, which is, you know, family fine. Lincoln City was outlet moment. That was the overwhelming answer, was outlet moment. Now, that may be changing. You know, we may be, have pushed the float idea not to change, but I don't see anything that indicates what people think of Lincoln City right now. I'd like to see something like that. And then, and I don't know how it translates, but there's a real affordability factor to Lincoln City. You know, when I think of Cannon Beach, no, friends store Cannon Beach neighbors, but I don't think affordable. And I don't go there as a young family. You know, I couldn't afford Cannon Beach. Go to seaside, knowing that get with a couple of rounds of bumper cars and school ball with my kids. And I don't know that, whether that's a negative or not, to say it's an affordable option for a family. So, you know, this is my take.
Oh, yeah. We're trying to get their money. Want more money than they have.
Anything else? Anything else you need from us?
No, I think this was a lot of great input, so thank you very much. I'm going to do a lot, so we appreciate it.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Stay clear of them.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Mayor, welcome to the line, customer.
Well, people at 7:25, now we need to take five. I've been here for two hours. You had it for the night?
Yep.
Okay, so we want to pull some paper or plastic from Phil another night?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. That's it. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, very good. Thank you.
I have an announcement. It's coming next Friday, the 29th. We'll have another officer view sworn in.
It's a, it's a, you know.
Um, can you guys?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm just making that easier.
Has to do with our timing, is it hard to start and then we can't remember.
Okay. I was trying to make a base on, I was having a chance to tell.
Yeah, that's right.